...when you're born, so you recognize.
No, 108 is still set aside.
Yeah, Madam Speaker.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Manana Cizilis, good morning. Good morning to my colleagues. I just want to note for the record, 108 is still set aside. We are -- I have emailed a couple of inquiries to Guam EPA and to the coordinator, and I'm just waiting for a response, so that's still in committee. So, thank you very much. And now we are on...
Do they announce their votes? Do they vote for Guam?
So, you may proceed then, Senator.
Thank you. Again, Madam Speaker, based on what was passed out two days ago, I would like to clarify that I'm making this amendment notwithstanding the House rules. And the amendment, as proffered, seeks to do more than to direct how a portion of the funds that would, under our existing Guam law, that Title V GCA Chapter Two, Division Two, Chapter Twenty-One, Section Two, One, One, One-Six, go into the general fund, will be allocated before the balance goes into the income tax reserve fund as proposed in this bill. I'd like to be clear, Madam Speaker, that all of the funds that are being distributed to the government of Guam go into the Treasury as revenue for general fund under our present law. The funding priorities outlined in this amendment have at all the public hearings and were a part of a bill that I would like to briefly outline those priorities. I want to state for the record that the first item listed in this amendment is to fund the Department of Administration's acquisition of software migration fiber connection security for the government-wide active directory and upgrade for the government of Guam's computer system and network infrastructure-related purposes. And I want to note, Madam Speaker, that if you, for those who want to know the history, there was a grant that was given to Department of Administration to install the hardware for what they called the Power Seven. And this Power Seven is, that grant was to cover for the hardware, but in this priority, we're looking at the cost of the operating system and the backup redundancy software for the two IBM Power Seven servers being installed. One will be at the Department of Administration, one would be at the Department of Revenue and Tax. And without this software, the Power Seven servers will not function properly. They were given authorization, Madam Speaker, to utilize that software, but that component of the software that is being utilized today is going to expire by the end of July, and that's why we want to work with this priority. The second item, Madam Speaker, is to fund the Revenue and Taxation's Real Property Valuation Study. And I want to say that without this study, we will not be able to fund the TIF, the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund. And I just want to note for the record, Mr. Speaker, that the issue regarding this need for the real property revaluation, some of you may know that there is another, that Department of Revenue and Tax is going to issue a, do a third attempt to issue a RFP for the much-needed revaluation for our property values, to update our property values, that hasn't been appraised for over twenty years. I want to say, Mr. Speaker, for the record, that if we get this done, the increases in the revenues to the value for the property owners will bring to our government coffers a lot of the needed resources. I want to say that DRT, Department of Revenue and Taxation, has stated that they've tried to do this before, but without enough funding sources to get this RFP going. Again, Bill 124 was introduced, and the components of that was also heard through Bill 95, and the report was appended. But we want to say for the record that this funding will literally ensure that the cost received from this will help the much-needed money that's needed for our government. The third one, Madam, Mr. Speaker, is the purchase, is going to, the Guam Police Department to purchase of marked police vehicles which shall include, but not limited to, the graphics, the emergency lighting, the sirens for the police and radio communication system, and a prisoner transport system. And the purchase of these police vehicles shall include a vehicle warranty and maintenance program that is much needed. And I want to say that the police vehicles must be purchased from the manufacturer's authorized dealer in Guam, and that the price shall include the manufacturer's full warranty and suggested or recommended routine maintenance schedule as defined by the manufacturer's scheduled maintenance guide for, and we want to include that minimum of three years or 125,000 miles, whichever comes first. Mr. Speaker, I know that we've been talking about providing the equipment and the resources also to police, the Guam Police Department. As I said earlier, as in everything, resources are needed for a lot of the things that the government of Guam is, basic mission is supposed to do, is to provide for the service of our community. And I don't know if my colleagues have read, has read this morning, that just as yesterday as we were talking about the home invasion bill, there was another home invasion that happened in our village of Baragata today. And we need to give the Guam Police Department the vehicles that they need to be able to make sure that their routine checks within the villages are done right, are done with the proper vehicles in place, to make sure that the communication in their vehicles are right, and to know that the cars that we give to them are warranted. And that, I want to say, Mr. Speaker, that as we look at giving GPD the much-needed vehicles in order to further our protection for our villages, this has been requested from this body time and time again. And this is one way of showing our commitment as a body, that if we look at the resources that we have today from the distributed funds, at $2.5 million to work this priority, and it's only a single item budget for this legislation, I want to say that it is in the right, that it is fair, and that because we need to work these priorities today, then I ask my colleagues, Mr. Speaker, to please, to please consider this amendment to Bill 100. And I really do hope that they will give this amendment careful consideration, as it is much greatly needed for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker Panglin.
Speaker, I rise to a point of order, Mr. Speaker. Standing rules require, I know that the motion was notwithstanding, but I still need to rise to a point of order, that our standing rules requires that appropriation bills outside of the budget bill and any supplemental bill, supplemental budget bill, shall contain only single appropriation items. And the amendment here would add three appropriations, basically, to Bill 100, and therefore, I believe that this amendment would, is out of order.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, I want to say that just recently, just earlier, the good speaker, the good retiring speaker, put an amendment in, in reference to supplemental annuities and COLA, and please, and it's coming from those same funds. And I want to say, if this is the case, we've already set precedents, because there was an amendment that was done that designated one appropriation in the hot bonds and designated the different priorities. And as we look at that need, I'd be the first to say that if the funds that we're taking out is taking away from any, from any of the main mission of what this was supposed to go into, then I'd be the first to put it back if there really is a lot of other funding elsewhere. But we have found money, several committee members, the author of this legislation in 100, has found a source, a funding source that can be utilized, that was just tapped into two, three days ago, and we've already set precedents in previous legislation. So, I'm just, please, asking this body to please consider that, because it's not like we have, just haven't done it. What's fair is fair. And I'd be remiss if I didn't at least give this fair consideration, to ask my colleagues to please, please give this fair consideration, as we did a couple of days ago, or several days ago, and as we did earlier. Thank you.
Senator Panglin.
Mr. Speaker, we did give this fair consideration. The author of these amendments introduced separate bills to meet and comply with our standing rules. And the Committee on Appropriations reported each and every single bill out containing each and every single appropriation in this amendment as single bills, as introduced by the author to comply with our standing rules. So, if we want to entertain these amendments, all you have to do is put the bills that contain the single subject matter of each of these appropriations on the floor. You don't need to amend Bill 100 to put all of this on one bill, that would then be out of order and not in compliance with our rules. Just bring up all the other bills that have those single appropriation items. You would get the same result, and you would comply with the standing rules of this legislature. That's my point, Mr. Speaker.
Madam Speaker.
Point of information, and I hope I got this right, is that even with Bill Number 95, where there is one, yes, one funding source, but then it prioritizes several capital improvement projects. No, I, no, I'm talking about 97. I'm just trying to get some information here. I mean, granted that the, at the time, to, for expediency purposes, and, you know, to be able to move forward with 95 by breaking it all up, and then I know that Senator Rodriguez was actually contemplating the exact same thing, to break up 95, and, but he didn't, and he left everything as is. So, the, I'm trying to get some information here, is that the difference between 95 and 97, where 95, yes, had five, six appropriations in one bill, we have 97 that has several as well, six, I guess, of the same thing. It remained intact, and then, but when we did go, move forward in breaking up 95. Now, as you know, I had not moved forward in 95, and yet pursued them individually. And I can understand the previous speaker, of course, and, I mean, Senator Munia Barnes, the, was proffering the amendment, bringing up other cases in which, yes, this body has, notwithstanding the House rules, is to be able to decide what then can be or cannot be on the floor. And now, if, I guess, we want to say that we want to be consistent, then I guess, you know, we should have been doing that at the very beginning. But the notwithstanding clause has always been the caveat in which, you know, determines what happens on this floor. So, Mr. Speaker, if you can provide that information, we'll appreciate it.
I'm sorry. The information I was supposed to provide? The court, the, the chair's just going to rule and allow the amendment. Let's go. I'm allowing the amendment. Anybody else wish to speak? Senator Adda, oh, Senator Adda and Senator Speaker.
Well, thank you, Mr. Speaker. You know, while I certainly would not argue that the, the items that we are appropriating these $2.5 million for, the software for DRT and the vehicles for the Guam Police Department are certainly legitimate needs, there's also other legitimate needs out there. For example, I mean, had I known we were going to go on a shopping trip, I would have put in my bid for preventive maintenance services for DPW's buses, especially in view of the fact that there's a protest on the ten buses, so that's, you know, ten new buses that's not going to go online. The fact that we haven't heard anything from DPW about shortage of buses, and they've been somehow able to, to keep them running, now is the time to provide resources to DPW to service those buses, so that when the school year comes up, you know, we don't wait until August, crunch time, we find out that we only have eighty percent of the buses that we need. Had I known that we were going to have, go on a shopping trip here, I would have also put in a bid to have funds set aside to fund technical consulting services to assist the Guam Solid Waste Authority Board in their efforts to begin transitioning, to take over the governance of the solid waste management program. But, you know, and, and so, so those, I think, are just as equally legitimate needs that probably merit consideration for some of this $2.5 million. And so, you know, what started out as a bill, which really was to identify where these unclaimed checks are to go to, has now turned into, basically, an appropriation bill that, that, you know, that, oh, we got some money, which to now, up to now, I still don't know how much money is being anticipated will be available from all these unclaimed checks. And so, I'm really, I support the, the items that we're, that the measure is appropriating for. I do have strong reservations about the manner in which we are addressing it. And, and then, a second concern that I have with the amendment is, so, we're identifying $2.5 million to be set aside, and maybe if I can ask the mover of the amendment to yield, so how much are we setting aside for the software, and how much are we setting aside for the police vehicles?
Inasmuch as that's not clear in the, in the amendment as provided, I will give you an opportunity to make those two amendments, if you wish to add them. We've broken the dam open, and we're going to make this a supplemental. Let's make it. Christmas tree.
Mr. Speaker, if, if, if the numbers here, I have the numbers, some of the numbers here, the total amount for the Power Seven, for the software, if I'm not mistaken, is at $700,000. And the, what else is there? $400,000 for the police vehicles, and... $1.4? And $1.4 for the, the valuation, the valuation for Revantac.
Is that specific in the legislation, or is...
No.
It's not. So, I mean, so there's 2.5 that's available, and if you wish to add your two amendments, Senator Adda, you're free to.
Well, that, I mean, if you add that up, my DI math tells me that 1.4 plus 700,000, that's 2.1, and it's 2.5. No, I think, I raise that as a, as a point of concern. I think maybe the mover of the amendment should, should, should make the, should make that amendment. But I still have my concerns about the amendment because of the manner in which we are appropriating to, for these, for these items. So, I rise in objection of the amendment.
Speaker, if this is, if we're going to entertain this amendment, this is an appropriation. I believe the body should then go into committee as a whole, and elect a request that we do so, make that motion, we go into committee as a whole, we call down DOA, and the, and any other representatives associated with the appropriations here, so GPD, DOA, and whoever else is beneficiary of these appropriations.
Senator.
Mr. Speaker, if I may, when I said a little bit earlier, I was asking for fair consideration, and, and, and talking about what's fair is fair and what was happened before, I'm feeling that some of my colleagues think that we weren't doing this right. When we first introduced legislation, and the, this amendment was in a prior session, it was under a different bill number. The question about breaking it up into separate bills came into play because our statute states that we, for every appropriation bill, it has to be a single item placement. And then, when we looked and went further, we broke it up, we put it on the session last month, and then, they said it didn't have its public hearing. We proved that it did, because 95 had its fair hearing. We appended the bill, the committee reports, to all those different bills. And, and then we're here again. It's not like we haven't done this before. So, I didn't put the amounts in. I wanted to separate, based on the law, based on our existing standing rules. All we did then was, I identified that, let's set aside the 2.5, and let's work on the priorities. I've got to believe in my heart that my colleagues know that this money is needed. And how much longer are we going to wait? There's a deadline for July for this Power Seven software. We haven't done an appraisal for the triennial assessment for the last twenty years. We've gone out on two RFPs and didn't do it right, because we don't have the necessary funds, and we're at it again. We found a funding source, and now we're doing, and now we're saying this is not right again. But I just want to say, Mr. Speaker, that, please, I, we don't need to go into committee of a whole.
Mr. Speaker, this body just entertained two bills out of the original 95 as separate bills. I don't understand the resistance of addressing all these other things as separate bills. We just did that in this session.
And he's right, and we also did with 95, and there are six separate appropriations, so we just did that as well, and sent it down to third as well.
Appropriations, Mr. Speaker.
Hold on, I think Senator, Senator Huggins keeps waving his hand.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and, you know, I really have a, I guess, a sense of appreciation of the lively debate. I listened very intently to, first of all, the motion on the floor, Mr. Speaker, if I'm not mistaken, is to consider, because this is an appropriation measure, that we bring in the respective parties, Department of Administration, BBMR, and any other pertinent individuals, to be able to discuss this appropriation measure. That's in our standing rules, Mr. Speaker. So, I stand in support of that motion that is presently on the floor. I do understand that there are other measures that have been entertained by this body. But let me also go back to a previous speaker, who alluded to, if in fact he had known that it was Christmas time, that this was going to be a Christmas appropriation measure, then he probably would have incorporated or requested consideration for other expenditures within the government that perhaps would also be considered priorities. And, you know, as Chair of Judiciary, Mr. Speaker, there's no hidden secret that all of our executive branch employees, to a great extent, have received their merit bonuses, have received their increments. And then, there's another component, the employees within the judiciary, of which sums have been presented to this body and to the executive, chief executive, asking for identification of those resources, so that obligation can be closed out and addressed. Now, the question is, is compensating an outstanding obligation a secondary, tertiary priority for employees, or is it taking care of some of these other things? And I think that that's subject to debate, Mr. Speaker. That's subject to discussion. Because I can honestly see and say, okay, $400,000 for the Guam Police Department for their vehicles is a priority, and I could conceivably consent to that. Some of these other requirements, for example, the real property assessment, yes, that's a priority, but where would we put it collectively, as a sequence of priorities? And whether, in fact, the question at the end of the day is, is there $2.5 million available, or is there $4 million available? So that at least, some of the other concerns that were shared by our colleagues can also be incorporated into this, and we can simultaneously, in one legislation, because we are discussing this measure, we can simultaneously address those priorities that are decided upon by this body. That's all, that's why I'm standing here in support of the motion, Mr. Speaker, because I believe that if we bring, and I'm going to refer to them as partners, but if we bring the partners in this entire budgetary discussion, DOA and BBMR in here, we may be able to get them to identify additional resources that we can utilize to address some of the concerns by the Chair of Transportation, or DPW, or some of the concerns that he shared, as well as perhaps other issues that members of this body would like to incorporate into any legislation. So, Mr. Speaker, I stand in support of the, the motion, and as a side note, I certainly concur with, if in fact we're going to allocate $2.5 million and appropriate it for these specific purposes, that the costs or the sums should be incorporated into the proposal. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
The chair will take a short rec. The Chair will take a short recess, sir. The Chair will admit its error, but to amend, to correct it, both the motion for a committee of the whole is mandatory under the rules, but it may be waived by a vote of eight, and the germaneness issue may also be waived by a vote of eight. So, the Chair will.
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. In anticipation of what your ruling is going to be, I then move that we waive the House rules requirement to resolve and agree the whole, given as the mover of the amendment explained that this has been a subject of a previous public hearing and discussed that publicly.
That motion requires eight. All those in favor of waiving the german, the committee of the whole, raise your hand. Waiving it, yeah. Passed. On waiving germaneness, raise your hand. Continue. Who wishes to speak on the main motion? Senator Benn. Oh, I thought, oh, I'm sorry. On the amendment. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I'd like to move that, I'd like to amend the amendment, Mr. Speaker. I'd like to strike out three and reinsert nine on the amendment, and I'd like to speak on it. On the first line of the amendment, under "I," all, any and all tax refund checks which shall have been unclaimed or outstanding for more than three years, I would like to make the amendment to strike out three and replace that with nine, and I'd like to speak on the amendment. No? Right there.
Point of order.
Madam Speaker.
I can't quote, of course, the particular section, but when an amendment had failed, then you can't bring it back the same amendment again, because we previously had, that amendment had failed and went back to three, so then to go back again and bring the same amendment out, I think that's out of order. I just don't.
Can you cite the rule on that?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I think.
So, we'll take a short recess. We find that rule.
Madam Speaker, you prepared to cite the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. The amendment is on the Mason's Manual Legislative Procedure, and it's Section 398. So, the citation is on the Mason's rules, and it's Section 398, "Decision on Amendment is Final." And, number two, "When a proposed amendment has been defeated, the same amendment may not be proposed again without first reconsidering the vote by which the amendment lost."
Objection, sound for you. You may continue. So, the amendment.
Then I would move the amendment that it be then to 10 years rather than nine. The amendment that failed was nine years. I'm making a motion to strike out three and put 10, and then I'd like to speak on that motion.
There's objection. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, the reason why I'm making this amendment, I think, is that the source of these funds that we are taking, Mr. Speaker, are from, is cheating, the majority are from income tax refunds that we still owe the people of Guam. And this government has not done its job in informing these people that they have checks waiting for them for income tax refunds. And what we're doing, Madam, Mr. Speaker, in this amendment, is that we're taking the money out of these people's pockets, or we're never going to get the money into these people's pockets, because we want to use them for other things. But these are the people's money, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I just can't understand why we are so adamant, when according to the financial management team of this government, there's millions of dollars in surplus, millions, literally, but we are targeting the money we owe the people in refunds, and we're going to say, no, we're going to ignore that $25 million surplus we have that we can use to meet this appropriation request. We're not going to touch that $25 million surplus, we're going to leave it alone, but we're going to take the money that is sitting in an account to pay your refunds, and we're going to use your refunds again. I just don't understand the rationale, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I changed the amendment from three years to 10, because to be consistent with the power that we are investing in our government to go after our people when they owe the government money. We are saying that when the people owe the government money, we can go back 10 years and collect that money from you. But when we owe you money, and we haven't paid you that money, if you do not come forward, it's not even if we don't notify, if you do not come forward, if you don't have the persistence to come forward and come back and hound this government to give you your money, after three years, when you get tired because you can't get an answer and you can't get your money, we're going to keep it. Why is it then that we say, hey, if we don't collect taxes from you in three years, you should not owe it? Because when you, we owe you money within three years, we don't owe you. Why are we so imbalanced? Why are we so afraid of equalizing the power of this government and the power of the people to access the money that's owed to them? We are given, the government, the power to go after you for up to 10 years. Why shouldn't you have the same power without having to go through filing with the, with the Government Claims Fund and having you stand in line once again? Why not leave the money in the Income Tax Reserve account, and if we really are so concerned about using, funding these, get it from another source? And it's not like there's no money. There's already a source of money that's been identified that is still sitting out there and hasn't been fully utilized and accounted for. Why not just switch the funding from the cheated accounts of the people's tax refunds? Why not leave that money in there, we can use the money? Now, there may be some saying, well, you know, we don't want to leave the money there for 10 years and just sit in an account. No, the money goes back into the account, and then it can be used by the government to pay other refunds, and when these people step forward, we will then not have them stand in line, and we will cut a check for them from money that's existing in the account. But it doesn't mean that because we're leaving it in that account for 10 years, that you can't use that cash. You can use the cash as long as you're paying tax refunds. It's just that you're giving that person, who was not informed by this government that he has an outstanding check that he can collect, you're giving him 10 years to come forward, and without any hassle, get another check issued to him. That's all this amendment would do. It would ensure that you don't hassle a person who you haven't gotten his refund to for up to 10 years, that when he comes forward, presents his documents, that you write him a new check. And in the meantime, you can use all that money that's sitting in the account to pay all the current refunds and the people that you can find. Why do we insist that we're going to put our people through the hardship once again, we put them through the hardship for the first time of being late in paying them their refunds? And now that we've borrowed to the hill, that we have borrowed ourselves into our 100 debt capacity, we haven't funded the refunds for, fully for this fiscal year, for those that have filed their income tax as of April 15 of 2013 for 2012, we still owe people over $60 million in refunds for 2012. And we don't have 60 million, and we can't borrow another 60 million. And what do we want to do? We want to take 2.5 million of the money that's sitting inside that account and say, the government keeps it, and now you go buy police cars? When we still haven't met our obligation to those people in paying them the money for the 2012 refund? Why do we want to take that money? We still owe these people that money for even the 2008 and 2009 that have cheated, we still owe those people. If they file a claims fund, we got to, they just have to hassle and stand in line. But we got people today that we owe refunds for, that we're going to take two, this is 2 million out of that refund account. This is exactly how we got to the point where we owe people $300 million in back taxes, because we kept not depositing the money into the account and using it for other operations, and then we find out after five, 10 years, oh my God, we owe the people $300 million! And how are we going to pay it? Well, I'm telling you, now we can't borrow any more money, so we can't afford to take money out of the refund account, and that's what this bill does. And we still owe the people money, we still owe them for 2012, and when they start filing for 2013, if we don't have the money in there, where are we going to get it? Because we can't borrow anymore. We're just going to dig ourselves right back into that huge hole of continuing to add to the liability we have to the people that we owe refunds. Why do we want to take the money out of there? Mr. Speaker, it just doesn't make sense to me, not when there are other funding sources that are available, that have been touted, because we've improved our financial condition. It's 2.5 million dollars, we got a $25 million surplus, take 2.5 out of that $25 million surplus. And if you really do want to do these things, and you really think they are vital, don't take it out of the people's pockets by taking the money and having it as cheat of, out of the income tax refund account. Leave it in there, because our liability on refunds, by the time we got, we come back to October 1st of this year, is going to be $160 million. And we don't have that money, Mr. Speaker, and that's why I'm saying, keep, let's put it in there, let's allow the people to come back within 10 years without a hassle, the money continues to circulate and pays current refunds, but when a person says, hey, the government has not informed me, I put in my, Mr. Speaker, I just told you, my brother went to REVEN Tax, changed his address for his real estate taxes, because he's filing at this time, went down there, changed it, he still hasn't gotten his real estate tax bill. We had to go up to REVEN Tax, pay a penalty, because they didn't send it out. That's what happens here. Even when the people move and do what they have to do in order to be contacted, it doesn't happen. And that's to pay a bill. When the people put their address in there to say, give me my refund address, they don't get it to that address. That's why we have money sitting in the account. That's why we had $13 million in return checks when we mailed out the 2009 checks. So, we can't just take that money now and go use it for something else, because the people were saying, the people sat on their hands. No, they didn't. They were never told, they were never informed, they called. I have people who called me from Texas, who called me from Las Vegas, because they didn't get their refunds. And so, we had to connect those people with REVEN Tax, even though these people put their correct address, they still didn't get it, and so they never knew, they call, they're told to wait, they're wait. Three years later, they're saying, sorry, you waited too long, and they're saying, I didn't wait too long. I was contacting you for the last three years trying to get my money. And we couldn't work it out. Now, we're going to say, sorry, it wasn't their fault, yet we're going to, we're going to say, we're going to just wipe it off, and you're not, you're not going to ever going to get that money. That's just unfair, Mr. Speaker, not when this government can go back 10 years and come after you. So, Mr. Speaker, that's why I think there is another funding source available. I think we deserve to protect the rights of our people, to get their payments when this government doesn't contact them and doesn't do its due diligence in reaching them, and that they should have this opportunity to come back and have a check reissued to them within 10 years. Thank you, Mr. Speaker, and I hope to get some favorable consideration on this amendment.
Thank you. I see Senator Muniya Barnes, and then Senator Sinicalis. Anybody else wish to speak on the amendment?
Mr. Speaker, I promise I'll be brief.
Senator Aragon.
I do rise in objection to this amendment, and I'm going to say that if we allow for the 10 years, then the funding source would have been killed. And I, Mr. Speaker, I don't have a bag of magic tricks that I can pull out money or take money or take money from this bag without any permission. I will tell you that these funds that were found from the escheded funds were money that hasn't been claimed since back 2008. And it's, and, and I'm saying that Lord knows if there's another funding source that the good retiring speaker was talking about from the surplus fund, I'd be the first to tell you that I'll put that 2.5 million back in because that would be additional money that hasn't gone into the income tax reserve fund yet. I'm not taking from that. This escheded funds is not in that account yet. Everything goes to the general fund, but it's not there yet. And in order for us to do it, I'm just saying that there's a priority that needs to be done today. We, I've shared with you why we need it, and I'm just saying that if we find that other vehicle, I'd be the first to tell you that I'll put it back in. But I'm not, we're not taking from that. And I'm going to share with you that we, if we do this 2.5 million dollars and this government executes what needs to be done in as far as the checks and balances, in as far as making sure that the valuations are done and then also protecting our people, then we would have done right by them. But to say that I'm taking it out, I am not. I'm just saying that before these unclaimed escheded funds goes into that, because I support, I support our people getting their income tax refunds. Mind you, my children are owed and haven't gone in, but hey, I need you to know, Mr. Speaker, that before these escheded funds goes, some of this goes into for the utilizations of giving our people their tax refunds, and I wholeheartedly agree that our people should be given those tax refunds, I need to tell you that there is 2.5 million that we can work with to give the resources to the government, to the agencies to do their jobs, and more resources will come in. So I respectfully request the good speakers.
Senator, Senator, Senator Snickless and Senator Ogun, I guess you're, you're here. Senator Ogun.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I stand up in recognition of the motion or the proposed amendment on the floor. And everything that the mover of the amendment, the secondary amendment certainly stands true. And I think that there's one thing that we need to recognize is that with these funds being extracted and utilized by the government of Guam for other purposes, other immediate concerns, as has been highlighted by the mover of the primary amendment, Mr. Speaker, it should not abdicate the government of Guam from its acknowledged obligation to any of our tax, tax refund recipients. And I think that that's really where the mover of the amendment is focused on. If I may, from my understanding, is that that should remain an obligation on the part of the government of Guam. That in fact, that information should continue to be provided, that individual pursued, so that within a particular timeline, whether it be 10 years, that at least the government continues to acknowledge and recognize that that is an obligation due to a taxpayer in, in the form of a tax refund. That is why I stand here in recognition of his desire to extend the timeline to 10 years. But there's two, I look at it from two different perspectives. One is the allowance, which is the primary amendment, to be able to extract these funds which are in a bank account and to utilize it for some of the priorities identified by the members of this body. But the other component is, from my perspective, is to continue for the government to continue to recognize that as an obligation and not erasing it off the books after three years just because the funds so happened to be escheded to the general fund for use for operational requirements. And I think that that's really the, the perspective and perhaps the angle that the government can take in terms of continuing to recognize that as an obligation because he's absolutely right. If in fact, these funds are due to taxpayers in the form of a tax refund, we should not consider it a de-obligation within a two, three-year timeframe. Why not be consistent? And I, I like the perspective of the chairman of Rev and Tax when he says, we need to try to be consistent in terms of our obligation, pursuing outstanding obligations, whether they be real estate taxes, GRT taxes. Let's make the, the timeline consistent, whether it be 10 years or 15 years, and allow the community to understand that from a general perspective, there's 10 years where in fact the government has the obligation to pursue these funds, but the taxpayer has the obligation first and foremost to pay the government of Guam. And I think that same concept can be applied in this case in terms of continuing to recognize that the government has to aggressively pursue these individuals who are rightfully due their tax refunds within an extended timeframe, but also provide the government, whether it be three years or a little bit more extended timeline, the opportunity to be able to extract some of those funds for other operational purposes. But when a taxpayer, I mean a tax recipient, tax refund recipient acknowledges that they have a tax refund due, that perhaps something can be formulated, language can be formulated so that in fact, that tax refund recipient, that obligation on the part of government of Guam has to be paid within a restricted timeline or let's say 90 days. I mean that, I look at those from two different perspectives in terms of de-obligating funds and also utilizing some of these funds for perhaps some of the more emergent situations. So I stand in recognition of the timeline and certainly I understand that perhaps we can take, we can address some of these concerns that were shared in terms of extending the timeline from the perspective that I just shared with you. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Ogun. Senator Snickless, I apologize for bypassing you, but I was calling for both.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I rise in support of the amendment. And I rise in support of the amendment in large part due to the, to the rationale shared by the senator who proffered the amendment. For me, the overarching theme in all of the work that I do is the responsible management of the people's money. That's the reason why I support this amendment because what it speaks to is the consistency in our statute of limitations, whether it's in collections, in taxes, that's what, that I'm trying to shape around a 10-year timeframe, to the eschatement of the people's money that this amendment would now shape also around that 10-year timeframe. It's consistent when it comes to the management of the people's money. And I hold firm to that practice because I believe that if we do that, if we are consistent in how we manage the people's money in everything that we approach, we're going to ultimately improve this island across the board in many, many respects. That's one of the reasons why even with my friends out here in the hall, I still have reservations in supporting the program that they're trying to promote because it has to do with managing the people's money. It has to do with whether or not certain standards and expectations are in place and being met, and if they're not, then maybe we should wait. I need to be consistent and in my heart, and when I go to sleep at night, it's the one thing that's going to make me feel like I am doing my job well for the people, being consistent. Even with this bill, this amendment, would put money into an agency that I have oversight over, the Department of Revenue and Taxation. The bulk of it's going to go for one of the needed funding areas there. But above and beyond that is the higher calling of the need to be consistent with the way we manage the people's money. So that's why I rise in support of this amendment. It, it provides consistency. And I also rise in support of this amendment because here we are going back and forth using so many different legislative techniques to come to a conclusion on 2.5 million dollars. And we have all these competing interests that are brought up on this 2.5 million dollars. I understand that there's even more competing interests that can be brought up on this 2.5 million dollars. And here we are as a legislature trying to figure out how we're going to shave more meat off of this bone on our side of the house, but on the other side of the house, and I have here an article from the Mariana's Variety dated June 20th, 2013, Thursday. On the other side of the house, we have an article here, I'll, I'll quote it, it says, "Calvo Touts Improved Economy." And it says here, "In making a case for improved bond ratings, the fiscal team told SMP that Gov Guam has eliminated the public deficit, paid off all outstanding liabilities, including tax refunds and debts owed to vendors, the deficit has been replaced with a surplus." Mr. Speaker, why are we even trying to figure out how to eschite and spend money that's supposed to go back to people that hasn't been claimed, that perhaps needs more time to be claimed? Why are we trying to figure out how to spend that money? When the message is not even a little confusing, but absolutely clear from the administration, everything's paid off, there are no liabilities, and there's a surplus. This isn't being told to just our people anymore, Mr. Speaker. This is going out and being preached to ratings agencies in the states. So I ask, if that is the truth, then where are the priorities when it comes to the spending of this surplus? Clearly, this amendment, and I, and I appreciate the work of the, the author of the amendment, Senator Munia Barnes, this amendment addresses clear needs in this government, clear needs. I don't even think Speaker Pangolinan disputes these needs. It's a question of what's more of a priority. Here we are debating what's more of a priority when the administration's going around saying that there's a ton of money. And we're, we're experiencing conflict within ourselves here over this 2.5 million dollars, none of which anybody disputes, but it's a question of what's the priority? Of course, improving our Department of Administration's technological infrastructure is a priority. Of course, doing the triennial is a priority. Of course, fixing police cars is a priority. But why are we the only ones debating this priority when across the street, the message is there's money to be had all over the, all over the island? Why are we the only ones trying to figure out what the priorities are? And what's it going to take for somebody to actually answer this question? This legislature is doing a fine job, Mr. Speaker. I'm proud of this group because we get into things, we debate, we are, we are trying to account for every single dollar and cent here, even when it comes down to 2.5 million dollars, trying to figure out what's more important. And I'm really, really honored to be a part of the process and to be a part of this body because here we are trying to do our job as best as possible. So where is the leadership going to come from? When is the truth going to come out? And when is the administration going to make any kind of statements as to what its priorities are with regards to this new reality that's being touted, not only to our people, but to ratings agencies as well? I'm not bringing this up, Mr. Speaker, to be, to be confrontational at all. I'm trying to understand what the truth is. Because if, if what the administration is the truth, then we shouldn't even be touching this money. We really should let it sit there for 10 years because if somebody wants to come back and claim their refund, we should allow that money to be available. But if there is no money to be funding these priorities, then maybe we need to be thinking about it as well. But I don't know how to make apples or oranges out of that when I don't know what the truth is based on what the administration is saying. And in the end, why are we the only ones trying to fight for different priorities? You know, my, my wife, um, this morning, she was up early on the computer, she said, what are you doing? She said, I'm checking my bank account. I said, why? She said, I want to see my increment. She got it. A lot of employees got their increments, and it's a good thing. You know, our government employees work hard and they deserve it. But clearly, that was spent, and that was a priority decision by the administration over all of these other priorities that are in this amendment. And over the many other priorities, the debt owed to the hospital, the judgment from Lazahn, the money for the Tezen Parkway, the $15 million in additional debt service that's coming in 2015 because of the borrowing that we did to pay off the tax refunds in the past, the $8 million balloon payment for the Guam Memorial Hospital. I am amazed that the message is that we've paid off all outstanding liabilities. There's people who, I'm, I'm still getting calls for tax refunds. When's the next tax refund coming out? Oh, we paid off tax refunds. We paid off debts to vendors. If we don't, at the very least, deal with the truth, how can we serve the people? Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, the Pangolinan amendment. Did I understand that you stated you have an objection? This call the previous question. Oh, close, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, once again, I don't think that anybody can say, no, I don't want to take the money from the people's tax refunds because that's exactly what this amendment does. That's what this bill does. We have over $2.5 million sitting in the income tax refund account. It doesn't eschete to the end of the year, or at least to the end of this month. That's why we're hurrying. And this bill would make sure that it does, make sure, or the amendment makes sure that we're going to take that money out. The amendment I'm offering makes sure that it stays in there and that money continues to be used to pay refunds. So anyone who's saying, oh my God, I don't want to take it, yes, that's exactly what you're doing with this bill and with this amendment. You are taking the money out of what has been put into. The statute states very clearly that once the money goes into the income tax efficiency payment trust account and then is transferred into the income tax refund account, then it stays in there. As a matter of fact, that's what the subject matter of Bill 100 is, that it will stay in there with the exception that after three years, we're going to take it out. That's what we're doing. We are taking the money out, taking it out of the pockets of the people who are owed that money, who have a right to that money, and saying, after three years, you have no more rights to that money. We're going to keep it even though it's our responsibility to make sure you get your money, and we failed in that responsibility. And I'm saying, three years is too short a time for this government to not fix its failure. Because we see what happens. Take a look at who is going to lose this money in terms of the eschatement. It's all the refund, refunds we owe. Tunisus, Tan Maria, Tunuse, Mr. Borja, Mr. Cruz, Mr. Adobai, Mr. Link, Mr. Royu. All of these people are the ones that were taking the money out of their pockets and saying, we're going to take it out of saying, "We're going to take it out of what could be in your pocket and going to keep it forever, and you have no further right." That's what this does. That's why I'm saying, let's give the government and the people the same power when it comes to the money and be consistent with the authority we give them. That if this government can go after you for 10 years, then you can come after the government for 10 years for your refund and keep the money in the account. Let's not have you go through other hoops to try and get your money. File a claim, stand in line, hound the Attorney General, hope that there's an appropriation to pay you after everybody else stands in front of you. We've already told these people to stand in line because we're not making the deposits into the account as required by law. That's why we have a court case. That's why the judge ruled, when I brought it to her attention, that, "Madam Judge, there is a process, there's a statute, there's a law in place to make sure that the money is deposited into the account. That every single month, based upon the collections, a percentage of that collection must be deposited into the account to ensure that when we get to the 12 months, that if we set aside $100 million and we make the deposits every single month, we will have $100 million to pay our people their tax refund." That's why the judge said, "We can pay then, if we follow that law, we can pay it in a timely manner." And that's why she ordered this government to make sure we pay it. So we're following the law. What this does is it ignores that law. It ignores it, and it's even worse because we already put the money in there, and this bill, this amendment, would take the money out. Rather than keeping it in there, we're taking the money out. So, Mr. Speaker, I ask my colleagues, if we really are here to serve the people, if we really are here to protect their interests, let's protect their money as well and the right to their money. And let's protect it for 10 years as we protect the government's right to collect taxes for 10 years. Let's protect the people's right to collect money owed to them for 10 years. Why is that so hard to support? Why is that so hard to understand? Mr. Speaker, I ask, on behalf of the people of Guam, who are continued to be owed money and haven't been paid and are going to end up waiting if we don't follow the law and continue to make the timely deposits into the Income Tax Pay and Trust Accounts. And if we're not doing that, and then we compound the problem by taking money out that is already in there, how are we going to be able to meet our obligations if we continue to act in this way and take steps backwards rather than moving forward? Thank you, Insidus Masin, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. On the Pangolinan amendment, there's been an objection. All those in favor of the Pangolinan amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. Motion fails.
Mr. Speaker, I have an amendment here that I'd like to offer, and I'd like to just
Chair has been notified that there is another amendment by Senator Uggan. Senator Pangolinan, I will come back to you since yours is copied.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, and thank you very much to the previous speaker for allowing me to be able to place this on the consideration docket. Mr. Speaker, we know that there's, the chief executive had identified that in fact there are merit bonuses, or there were merit bonuses that were due to the government of Guam employees. And as in the application of his authority by law, he was able to take care of all the executive branch employees back through 1991. Also, in addition to that, Mr. Speaker, he was able to reinstate the increments that were previously instituted back in January of 2011 to all executive branch employees. In the meantime, there were some obligations that were accumulating in the judiciary branch in the amount of $1.1 million that the chief executive, I did circulate and provide copies of that particular communication to yourself as well as the members of this body in regards to the outstanding amount that is due to the judiciary Guam employees as it applies to merit bonuses. In that light, Mr. Speaker, I'd like to ask for your consideration and the consideration of members of this body and certainly the consideration of the chair with the oversight over revenue and taxation to consider allocating or replacing, I would like to propose an amendment to replace parentheses BB with the following amendment to read outstanding merit bonuses due to exemplary judiciary Guam employees in the amount of $1.1 million. And that's my proposed amendment. Mr. Speaker, and let me also say this, that this does in no way deprioritizes the requirement of the real property reevaluation. Because we all know that over the course of the past many years, that that is something that this government really has to pursue and really has to put a closure to. So that in fact, any additional revenues that can be realized as a result of that particular project can be realized moving forward. But you know, Mr. Speaker, one thing that concerns me is that if we look at that from that perspective, and we're just a couple of months out from the discussion on 2014 budget, we have an outstanding obligation. When I say "we," the government of Guam has a recognized outstanding obligation in the amount of $1.1 million for a co-equal branch of government. And I'm asking all of our colleagues here to consider, and I'm asking them for their support and your support, Mr. Speaker, to consider adopting this amendment so that we can put a closure to this issue. And there will be an opportunity not too far from today where in fact, the obligation or the property revaluation activity can be addressed at that time. And I ask, Mr. Speaker, and I'll keep it brief here on out, for your consideration in terms of trying to take care of this particular obligation that is rightfully due to the judiciary Guam employees. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. On the Uggan amendment, anybody wish to be heard? I see Speaker Wampat and Senator Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I had, you know, kind of on the side had asked, you know, the senator whether he had introduced this bill and identifying, of course, a funding source to be able to make the payments, to pay for the merit bonuses for the judiciary. And I know that, and yes, a lot of the statements being made is that, on the executive side of the three branches, that merit bonuses have been paid. The judiciary, the second branch, of course, has not been able, I guess, to identify some funding. And in the discussion, there's, you know, always the hopes of generating additional revenues. And one of the things, and I don't think there's anybody that has ever, or who would deny, that, you know, property taxes have, basically, the revaluation had not really been done for the past 20 years. And the revenues received from the real estate property taxes actually go into the Territorial Education Facilities Fund that was created, I think maybe in the 22nd Guam Legislature by former Speaker Pangolinan, looking, trying to find ways, of course, to generate additional funds for the Department of Education for educational purposes. And so all those monies basically go to the schools because we've always said that public safety, health, and education are the top priority of this government. By taking now or redirecting the amounts that in the amendment by Senator Munia Barnes, to take that now away and to have it go instead for merit bonuses, then actually would defeat the whole purpose of having the reeval done. And by doing so, then that would mean, of course, additional revenues to finance renovations or replacements of our schools. And there's no one in here who'd deny that all of our schools, with exceptions of those that were built by the previous administration with compact impact monies, and then also by this legislature who allowed and authorized going out to get bonds to build JFK High School. That's one school built, you know, by just, of course, using bond monies versus using compact impact monies. Now, we know that currently we are leasing at a Tezen to be able to house a school that was closed. And then, of course, you know, there are other schools as well that are on the books in which the Department of Education would like to be able to place students there as they renovate their schools, other schools. And by doing this, then would prevent any additional revenues that could be brought in to renovate and replace some of our high schools. And right now, we're saying there are two high schools that are in need of either replacement or renovation, and that's the JFK, I mean, Simon Sanchez High School and George Washington High School. And I know that by, and this might be, of course, jumping ahead, but meaning that if then this happens, then as a result of those monies, then these are the things that we could do. But it will not be able to happen when these monies then are taken away or redirected for something else. So, and as much as we all are very supportive of, you know, the efforts in which we, and when I say "we" as a government, in which we want to address a lot of the personnel issues, to address any vending obligations that, you know, one by one, those are being addressed. And I know it's not something in which this government can do overnight, but when we remain diligent and continue to find ways to be able to do this, then I think, you know, we'll eventually get to that point. But to directly then redirect these monies and then prevent the additional revenues that could be realized to be able to address the needs of our schools that, and I know my colleague has asked, that I do not object, but in this case, I will object. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Thank you very much. Oh, anybody else? Oh, Senator, I'm sorry. Speaker Pangolinan.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, of course, the decision is kind of set with regards to, "We're going to use this money, no matter what. We're going to take it out of the pockets of our people. We're going to take away their tax refunds. They're going to lose it forever because of the inefficiencies of this government, and we're going to use it for these priorities." And I think that what we, this amendment does is it just says that we're going to put the priority then to other people that we owe money to, to the Gov Guam employee at the judiciary, because every other Gov Guam employee is getting the same increment or the merit bonus. That this government has stepped forward and said, "We're going to pay the merit bonus, and we're going to pay you and you and you and you, but we're not going to pay you. You're going to have to find the money yourself." Well, if there is money, then I say, once again, I say, "We go back and we treat our people the same. We treat the executive branch employee the same as we would treat the judicial branch employee, and if they're both due merit bonuses and we're paying one, then let's pay the other as well." And that's what this does. So while I may not agree with how it's going to, where it's going to come from, it's a foregone conclusion that that money's going to be taken away from the people, from their tax refunds because of the failure of the amendment I had to keep it in their pockets, at least for the next 10 years, instead of taking it out of their pockets and putting it in the government's pocket. Which pocket next should it go into? Well, then we should meet our obligation to the employees as well. We're saying that we want this because we're going to increase the revenue. Well, in a public hearing just last week, we went through the process with the Director of Revenue and Taxation and asked them, "Where are you with regards to the triannual assessment? Where are you with regards to the comma program? And what are you doing about it? Where are you with the escape assessment?" This administration had indicated and accepted the fact that they were going to raise additional revenue by implementing and doing the escape assessment project. And the first phase of the escape assessment project was doing the interlays of all of the buildings on Guam with the maps at DPW. And so they were able to do the aerial overlays, and they actually were able to see where people have improved their homes, made extensions, compared that to what is on the tax rolls, and then went out and inspected it. And so when they went and did that, they found, for example, that a two-bedroom house is now a four-bedroom house. And so what they did was, they measured the new four-bedroom house, put the additional two bedrooms from the original, and the additional two bedrooms from the original two bedroom, and assessed that tax. That's the escape assessment. And there will be additional revenue from then putting those escape assessments on the tax rolls and sending them out. So we've asked the Department of Revenue and Taxation to inform this legislative body so that we know what those revenues are going to be and what those additional revenues are, and then we will have the opportunity to make a decision on how we're going to apply those additional revenues. We don't have to worry. Those additional revenues will go into the Territorial Educational Facilities Fund, which is earmarked and set aside for capital improvement projects within our public school systems. So, once again, even without the triannual evaluation, we will have additional revenues coming into TEFF, and we've asked Revantax, and they said they're going to give us that report. Why don't we just use that money? Why don't we use the additional revenue from the escape assessment to fund the triannual? Why do we want to take it out of the taxpayers' pockets, out of their refunds? See, that's what I'm trying to just understand here. There are opportunities to fund the priorities that are being asked here without taking the money out of the people's tax refunds because there's not enough money there to pay the tax refunds. We don't have enough money in the account, yet we want to take it out. And I'm saying, so if really our concern is that we want to do this so that we can increase the revenues, we already have a mechanism in place that will increase that revenue, and let's use that increasing revenue to fund the triannual assessment. And if we are going to take this money and meet our obligations, then let's give it to the employees who are being treated disparately and differently and unfairly. Let's take the money because we can now say we will use the additional revenue from the escape assessment to fund the triannual, and let's take this 1.4, and if we're going to take it out of this tax refund count, let's do it so that we become fair to the employees of this government, so that we treat the executive branch employee the same as the legislative branch employee, the same as the judicial branch employee, and when they are owed their money and we're paying one group of people, we should pay the other group as well. And I think that's our obligation. So thank you, Mr. Speaker, Insidus Masin.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak on the Uggan amendment? Is there an objection to the Uggan amendment? Was that an objection, Madam Speaker? It was. It was? She said objection. All right. We'll call the previous question. Since there was an objection, all those in favor of the UGAn amendment, please indicate by raising your hand. No, all those in favor of the UGAn amendment. Three, four, five, six, seven. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Um...
On the UGAn amendment.
I respectfully say that I have to recuse myself. My daughter, my brother and sister, my brother and sister...
I objected that recusal request. I questioned the recusal request, only because, yes, everyone's familiar that as the Oversight Chair, I do have family members in the judiciary, but I have to separate myself from that to some extent. Thank you, Mr.
Then that motion is made to be, to request that I recuse myself. I have to disclose that my daughter is an employee, and my sister and my brother are, who are direct, immediate family members, as stated by that, that I have to disclose for the record, so...
She just disclosed, no, you're just disclosing, you're not asking to be excused.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we all disclose that?
Point of order, Mr. Speaker. I rise to seek your guidance on the matter of asking to be recused. This is an amendment that seeks to benefit all the employees of a certain branch of government. I think some of us have taken this conflict of interest a bit too far to say that there's a conflict when really there's not.
I don't believe that she was saying she had a conflict. She was just disclosing, and, which is fine. She's not asking to be excused. But the amendment fails. There was only seven, according to my count, unless the clerk can correct me. All right. Senator Panglin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. The amendment I have, which I passed out, would add at the end of the first of II, just a way that then this money is handled. If you recall, Mr. Speaker, this body passed a supplemental appropriations reserve fund, and that fund is meant to then capture revenues that were not appropriated during the fiscal year and have been identified during the fiscal year, that they be deposited into that account, and then that account will then have the money in there, and then it's appropriated to what the legislature does. So all this amendment does is it follows that statute, then, that the revenues that have been excheated, which were not part of the general fund appropriation during fiscal year 2013 budget, that it just first be deposited into the SAR account, and then the appropriations or the allocations continue. So it's just to account for the money and to ensure that we identify it as revenues that are over and above what was adopted in the budget, and it goes into the supplemental account, and then from that supplemental account is then allocated to the same priorities, and I'm not making any changes on the priority. So it's just to follow the statute of the deposits required for revenues that were identified during the fiscal year that were not part of the general appropriation of the FY 2013 budget.
All those wishing to be heard on the Pangolinian amendment. Speaker Wampat.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, I think I'd like to ask a few questions of the mover of this amendment, when it says to be transferred by deposit from the general fund to SAR and shall be used for. And so I'd like that to be explained a little bit more, because then these monies will not, of course, they will be available in the year 2014, and October 1st. And when it goes into the general fund and then the SAR fund, then what is the order of priority are we talking about in the SAR fund, although the word here shall be used for A, double A, B, C, D, and E?
Do you yield?
Yes, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, it would be the priority as outlined in this budget. We know that this amendment identifies 2.5 million, and that money would then go into the SAR fund. And that 2.5 million that is deposited into the SAR fund is then used for these priorities as they are stated in here. So it's just an accounting mechanism to ensure that we keep separate monies that have already been appropriated in FY 2013, and that this is additional money over and above the revenue estimates adopted in the budget for 2013. It gets put into that, and then it's used just for the priorities as set by this. So when they do a transfer of 2.5, and it goes into the SAR fund, is accounted for in there, then it's used for these same priorities, and it doesn't mess up that priority or changes any priority. Any additional money that is transferred into the SAR fund and then identified for an appropriation would be tied to that transfer. So this 2.5 million, when it's transferred into the SAR fund, is tied to spending it in the way that is outlined in the amendment.
So if I understand, of course, that, you know, correctly, and my own words, of course, is that in the budget law, the way it is written is that it has an order of priority in which any additional monies, revenues, at least from my understanding, tax revenues, and, you know, and I'm trying to read, of course, what was in the law, that any collections in excess of the revenue that, you know, we've identified in the budget, and then it says "available excess general fund tax revenues," excess available general fund tax revenues, again in Section 5 of prior year obligations and future obligations, shall be appropriated for the payment of prior year obligations and future obligations, and it breaks down the percentages and all that. So I think for me, when, in my thinking then, is that when, and since we're saying that these is, that these are appropriations, I think the operative word here really, where it says "shall be used for," is that I like to delete the "used" and "shall be appropriated" in the priority of double A, B, C, D, E, and so on. So that would be the order of that, of the, these will be the order of the priority listing. I can understand it going to, you know, the general fund to the SAR fund then, so that it's one appropriations, but then it's appropriated individually for these particular items that are listed. So that would be my amendment to the amendment.
On the mics, please, everybody. Can I ask all the members to please use the microphone? Is there a request for recess?
No.
I wanted to clarify, Mr. Speaker, the, the Speaker was reading from appropriations from the budget, and that excess revenues collected from those revenues are, have been identified, and those then go to pay those priorities. But those are coming out from the appropriations of the budget. Those are not coming out of appropriations from SAR. There are no revenues in SAR at this time that have been transferred in there, because there have been no revenues identified, other than these revenues at this time, that are old, that were not identified in the budget bill itself. So what this does is, we're saying now that when the budget bill was passed, we did not account for these excheated money. And now that we're accounted for these excheated money, they're not part of the revenues appropriated in the budget, and so they should go into the SAR fund, and then whatever the legislature decides to use that money for, which in this case would be for these priorities, then it gets paid out of the SAR fund and funded out of there as separate revenues beyond what was adopted and appropriated in the budget. So I understand the Speaker's concern on this, but I think, again, once, this is just trying to follow the statute that we've set up on how we spend money that is not part of the identified revenues in the annual budget bill. And that, this is exactly why we, how, what SAR was meant to capture, how we spend money that are not part of the appropriations and identified as new sources of funds after the budget bill is passed.
Does that explain it sufficiently for your question, Madam Speaker?
Well, yes and no. And the reason why I say that, because if it's transferred into the general fund, so it goes to one place, and then from the general fund, of course, we can appropriate it out, you know, in the, in the priority as listed. But if it goes into the SAR fund, of course, then that is a totally separate priority that would not address any of these. And that's, unless that can be cleared, right now, I mean, I still, you know, stand with this, and I probably need to amend it really, rather than what I had initially discussed, is that it be transferred, or not even transferred, but shall, you know, then be deposited into the general fund and appropriated in the priority as listed. But can I get...
Would amending the word "used" to "appropriated for," take "used" out and just "appropriated for"?
But I want it in priority as listed, you know, because then, but then I need to make sure, first of all, that in this discussion, is that how, based on at least my discussion and wanting to make sure, that it really goes to these items that are listed and not necessarily back to the other list that, well, that... Then can we...
We'll take a short recess.
Okay.
We'll take a short recess.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. After considerable discussion and, you know, trying to negotiate and everything, and we're nowhere near any type of, um, anyway, agreement, so I'm just going to withdraw my amendment. And, uh, that's it. That's it.
Any other senator wish to speak on the Pangolinian?
I, I just, well, how was this an objection called question?
Oh, there's been an objection and a call of the question.
Mr. Speaker, can I just move that we recess till lunch and, and then come back, and, and we'll have a solution when we come back on this amendment.
The legislature will break until 2:00.